Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the Audit and Standards Committee, which is being held in the Council Chamber at the Town Hall. Please note that because of social distancing restrictions and other public health and safety measures, those are still applying, so for our members here, please keep your distance, remain seated as much as possible during the meeting, and if you do need to leave your seat, please make sure you're wearing a mask. And there is hand sanitiser available for you to use, which is over there. This meeting is a public meeting and is being livestreamed for the public to view. So can I ask that when you want to speak, you raise your hand, and when I indicate you can speak, make sure your microphone is switched on. Have you all used your badges to get it activated? And when you have finished speaking, can you please switch your mic off? I think the other housekeeping arrangements, you know where the toilets are, that way or that way, depending on your gender. And we don't expect any planned fire alarms, so if one does go, then it is real. Please, we'll go out through that green door and we'll leave by the nearest exit, but clearly that one is closed, the front door. And I believe we are supposed to gather in Tudor Square, not... I know, I know, everybody thought it used to be the Peace Gardens, but apparently now it's Tudor Square, just so that you know. So I'm now going to move into introductions, so I'll start with the committee members first. I'm councillor Sean Edmire Richards, and I'll pass on to Alison.
I'm Alison Howard, the independent co-opted member.
Thank you, Alison.
Councillor Mohammed Marouf Crooks in Crosspool.
Councillor Joseph Patrick Hillsborough.
Councillor Arden To Broomhill in Shawaway.
Councillor Simon Clement Jones, Beauchamp Greenhill, Deputy Chair of this committee.
Thank you, and I have to thank you also for chairing the last meeting, Simon, again. Thank you. And then the officers who are here with us, I'm going to start here on my left.
Eugene Walker, Executive Director, Resources.
Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal and Governance.
Linda Hunter, Senior Finance Manager for Internal Audit Risk Management and External Funding.
Helen Malteino, Finance Manager, Internal Audit.
David Phillips, Head of Strategic Finance.
J. Bell, Committee Secretary.
And in front of me is Jason, who is keeping the whole show afloat, so thank you, Jason. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Chair, I've received apologies from David Barker, Hayley Clark, John Dawson and Joe Cairns.
Right. So from David?
Hayley Clark, John Dawson and Joe Cairns.
Right. Okay, and just so that we know, that when we get to item six, item six is going to be taken at the end of the meeting, and we will go into closed session for that item. So, right, so next is item four, declarations of interest. None, thank you. So we'll move on to item five, which is the minutes of the previous meeting. Can I ask first, are they an accurate record? I wasn't there, so, Simon?
Sorry, as far as I'm aware, yes, Chair, thank you.
Can somebody second them?
Second it.
Thank you. Oh. Are there any matters arising? I think on page 11, there were a couple of items which we picked up in the pre-meeting, and I think that the information from those came to everybody in an email today, so that's okay. I did want to ask, 10.2, page 13, if I can ask Dave just a bit about that in terms of, are we expecting any delay from our external auditors again this year?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, we had discussions on progress on the audit recently with the external auditors. Unfortunately, although the partner and senior manager are available, the next level down, the in-charge person, who is responsible for all the day-to-day running of the audit and manages the day-to-day supervision of the team, has been on long-term sick since the start of August and is not expected back until the start of October at the latest. As we all know, the state of resources in external audit is powerless across the entire nation at the moment, so they have absolutely no slack or spare capacity. So although they are proceeding on some of the areas using the national experts and some of the areas on our financial resilience and on value for money, they've largely pulled out of proceeding on the day-to-day audit work in September. Their intention is still to do the audit fieldwork in October and November and get finished by December, as before, but I have to say, that allows absolutely no slack for anything taking longer. So, much as the current intention, and if the external audit were here, they would say they're still going to finish and bring their opinion to the December committee, I have to warn people that that may happen, but, you know, I wouldn't put your mortgage on it happening, because if anything goes wrong, it will delay post-Christmas again, which is unfortunate and frustrating, but is a reflection of the external audit market generally and our auditors' problems as part of that in just not having enough field staff to have any resilience. I'm happy to answer any questions on that, anyone wants.
Does anybody have any questions about that? I think we'll just note that, and large crossings of fingers from everybody here, please. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to agenda item seven, which is Linda.
Thank you, Chair. This report is my annual internal audit opinion. So what the report does, it highlights the work undertaken by internal audit for the year 2021 and the performance of the audit section, and also it supports the next agenda item, which is the AGS. I'll just highlight some key parts of the report. The executive summary that starts at paragraph five, the key point there is that, from the work we've undertaken during the year, that I am satisfied as the Senior Finance Manager for Internal Audit, that risk management, governance and inter-control frameworks are adequate. So that's a positive point, now you've got an adequate opinion, so that's a good result there. I base that opinion on the content of the report, so I've managed to summarise the areas I've looked at. I'll just highlight, for 2021, we didn't have any no-assurance opinions, so we had a few limited opinions, but yet, no, no assurance. Due to Covid, the original plan that we presented back in the March of that year, it, yeah, we had to be flexible because of Covid, we had to change some of the resources and reprioritise, but we concentrated the audits on the key risk areas, so at least I could still provide an opinion. I managed to place highlights as well on the AGS and also the risk management process, which, again, is going to be discussed this meeting, and also the work done by external auditors, so to say it was an adequate opinion. Some other key areas in the report, paragraph 22 highlights about the PSIAS, that's the Professional Sector Internal Audit Standards, and one of those requirements is that we undertake an external assessment every five years. Now, that's currently underway with Burnham City Council. The last meeting, I presented the terms of reference to that review. They've done all the interviews, and I know they've interviewed the Chair, Chief Exec, so, yeah, we've done the interviews. I've done the self-assessment, they've gone through the evidence, and actually tomorrow, I'm doing a walkthrough with them through all our working papers and the programme, and also going through the gaps, so there might be some gaps that I can report on next time, but hopefully, fingers crossed, not too many gaps. So that report I will bring back to probably the December committee, so you'll be able to get the feedback on that. In the report, it's got the structure. Now, currently, we're fully staffed, and we've got 11 full-time equivalent and two trainees, so that enabled us to provide the opinion for last year. The planning process is the next section we've got in there, and on table 37, that highlights the work we've completed, so we completed 72 reviews in the year. We did have some audits that were deferred, for example, the grant reviews, some of the funders extended because of Covid, they extended the deadline for sign-off, so those ones we couldn't undertake, they were out of our control. And then also, we have deferred some audits by the client's request. So an example of that was, I might not pronounce this right, Calistis, it was an application review, that was to do with repairs and maintenance, and it's been replaced with Total Mobile. So again, even though it was in the plan, we're going to put it in for next year, because obviously, it wasn't worth us looking at a system that's going to be replaced. There's a section about business partnering work, now that's been very successful, so what we do there is we do consultancy work on that. We did 21 pieces of review last year, and I've highlighted them in Appendix F of the report. And then there's a section on audit reporting, now that is where we've got the opinions for all the audit reports, but also you'll find the main financial system work under there. So we did nine reviews in 2021, and then we also did 38 pieces of work that was called productive still, but it didn't provide an opinion. So, for example, that is probably the follow-up work, grant sign-off and any working groups we attend. And then the final section, that starts at paragraph 63, that outlines, there's a table there about our performance indicators and what we achieved, and like some of the achievements, we were nearly there but not quite on the targets for some of them, but we have five performance indicators. So the recommendation for the committee is to note the content of the report and also the audit opinion of adequate, so. So if any questions on the content of the report?
Councillor Clement Jones.
Thank you. First, thank you very much for the report, and I thank you for your work on this. Obviously, the, I'm not sure if this is really a question for you, or perhaps other officers, just in terms of, obviously, everything's in the red, everything went into the red and it's staying in the red, and obviously, some of this is starting to look like business as usual, it's not a risk. So, yeah, really, I'm just kind of trying to work out, you know, what is business as usual, and what, you know, hopefully, we can mitigate over the next few years out of these, so, yeah, really, thanks a lot, but we need to look at the future, and, you know, what are the, you know, so in terms of, you know, finance of SCT, the medium-term financial pressures, I had a briefing today, you know, that was quite scary. So, yeah, you know, where are these risks, are we about to crystallise any of them? How much trouble are we really in?
Shall I respond on some of those questions? Yeah, you're alluding to the areas in the risk management report on medium-term financial standing and budgetary position, which we are flagging up as red. If I can be positive for a moment, the positive thing from this committee and the council's position is we are flagging up these pressures early on, and the risk management processes to identify them and for us to take action against them are working well, I think. That's been positive. The negative side of things is that we are facing a significant budgetary overspend for this year, a higher, for those of you who've been here before, we generally have budgetary overspend early in the year, because we put in plans to make savings, they don't always come to fruition, and then we have to put in place other things to replace them. However, the level of overspend for this year is higher significantly than in previous years. The reasons for that are, you know, mainly not entirely, but mainly, well, almost entirely to do with Covid-related reasons, mainly in social care, although there are also leisure-related pressures as well, and some other slippage in other areas, and they're to do with, in both adults and children's social care, additional pressures we've got on the adult side, additional number of people needing looking after difficulties in moving people into care homes at the moment, so they're getting expensive care at home, pressures on families during the pandemic with people stuck at home altogether, uncertainty about jobs, more poverty, et cetera, causing more family breakdown. I think it's fair to say, during the pandemic, it's been difficult for us to intervene as intensively with families as we would have done normally and to have the same level of early warning, so we've been successful as a council in getting preventative work into families, preventing breakdown, and that's both a better outcome and less expensive, so it's a double benefit. Losing the ability to do that during the pandemic has put more pressure on our children's social care services, so both of those are showing very significant overspends. We have, as a council, to do two things, we have to continue lobbying central government to recognise these pressures and to fund us, and much as there's been a welcome announcement of additional social care spend, I have to say, initially, that's mainly directed towards the health service and towards new burdens, it's not directed towards our initial underlying cost pressures, which are still frankly poorly recognised by central government. We have the same social care cost pressures that health service have, but do not get funded for them, unlike the health service. So that's been a big pressure side, and the other side of things is, we have to work at looking at the way we do things and our care packages, et cetera, and look to try and get ourselves back to the better position we were in pre-pandemic, with more intensive prevention work with families and managing the cost of care packages and re-abling people, older people and people with learning disabilities, not just older people in adult social care, also mental health, people with physical and learning disabilities, and re-abling in the way it's possible to manage down the costs of these spends. And we're taking various actions now to do that. We'll be reporting on our medium-term financial position, so the underlying consequences of this, the intention is to take that to corporate executive in October, so I invite all members to look at that report, because that will show the longer-term position, but we do have to work intensively with these problems to keep ourselves financially stable. We do, as ever, have reserves, so we have somewhere to go before we topple over the edge of the cliff, we do have time, but we have to use that time to resolve the problem, or we will get in the same position that other councils have got into over the last few years, where they face cost pressures but they haven't had the reserves to manage them. Final point, you know, a lot of these pressures are, well, all of these pressures are national, so it's not just us, so we need to lobby very intensively as a sector to get recognition. I'll pause at that point unless Eugene wants to add anything at all to that.
And did you want to come back on that, Simon?
No, no, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I think it's just important to note, as I say, you know, it's our job to monitor these things, and things are looking bad. But, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, thanks for the support, and to say that, you know, as always, very clear and easy to understand for us, thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank David for that exposition of where we are, because I think it's very useful to know, and particularly knowing it's not just us, that most other parts of local government are in a very similar position. Angela, did you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thanks, Linda and the team, for, again, a really clear report. I have a question for paragraph 40. Obviously, some of the staff were seconded to work somewhere else during the pandemic, so it's amazing that you managed to complete the vast majority of the work that was scheduled for the year. Do you think that the fact that people have been working from home has had an effect, you know, an impact on effectiveness of the audit, internal audit? That's my first question. My second question is on page 43, paragraph 55, where it talks about, I know you've answered this question in the pre-meeting, but I think it's important for people out there to know as well, whether it's the, this committee in the past has ever had to intervene, and also would be interesting in paragraph 63 to know what percentage of responses we get, you know, how many out of all the, you know, in terms of responses, how many do we get? And what is the percentage that is represented by those responses? And I think that might be it. I think you've answered most of my questions. Oh, yes, I have one on Appendix E about the, you know, the payroll collection and management team. Is there a schedule for the process to be satisfactorily achieved? Is there like a target in terms of a time target rather than? Thank you, Linda.
So I'll answer them in order. So, yeah, the working at home, like I say, it was new to all the auditors, everybody that was working across the council, so, yeah, but we was quite lucky, because right from the start, we all had our laptops and we had RAS cards, so we could get, carry on still doing our audits, so, but obviously, our audities had other conflicting priorities. So, you know, us chasing to do audits and chasing some working papers and evidence was difficult at first, but to be fair, now we're getting a bit more back into business as usual, things are progressing a lot faster-paced to what it used to be, so, yeah, it was difficult at first. We did find an area that, when we audited schools, we did that remotely, we did five schools in 2021, and it was difficult, because we, obviously with the term times, we were chasing and chasing, and then they had the two weeks off and then the six weeks and this, so it was, that was difficult. So what we decided for this year, we're not doing those remotely, we are doing those on-site. So they were the only ones that we had more difficulty with, with the schools. So otherwise, it's worked quite well. We've got used to teams now doing the meetings and doing interviews on teams, so, yeah, people just send us electronic copies of the evidence, so, yeah, the working at home's progressed quite well. The second one, yeah, about non-agreement recommendations, we haven't had any that we've had to bring to audit committee, so that is positive, and we haven't had, because we prioritised the recommendations, and the two high ones, we have critical and high priority recommendations, and we've had, none of those have been disagreed. So either we've found a compensating control, or we've chatted to the audities and, yeah, tried to negotiate a way of accepting that recommendation, so, yeah, that's positive for that. I think you mentioned the next one was about questionnaires. Yeah, so what I can do next time, I can put the returns, but in the report, I have put, we did struggle getting the returns in 2021, and we didn't always chase them, because obviously, they had other things, the audities had other things on their minds than doing the questionnaires. We did sometimes get a quick email back saying, "Thank you for the report, content was, you know, good to hear", and, yeah, so we got more emails back rather than the formal questionnaires, but we will pursue those more this year, so, yeah, we'll be chasing those more, back and put the figures in for the next report. And then, yeah, what we have for all Appendix E, for all those reports in there, because they're the limited assurance reviews, what we do is we follow those up, so they will form part of the follow-up review in 2122, but also, all the recommendations that we make, we agree with the audity, the timeframe for implementation, so we have got timeframes for every recommendation that's in the report, so, yeah, they will be followed up. I think that was all of them.
Yep. Thank you. Well, Linda, it's actually Alison and then councillor Marouf.
Angela's actually asked the question that I was going to ask, which was about the long-term impact of working from home, so I think you've answered that, thank you.
Yep, thank you. This is good, great minds thinking alike. Okay, Marouf?
Thank you, Chair. Mine's just an inquisitive question, really, following on from what Angela picked up on point 40, this is our point 42, around the issues of staff with falsification of mileage claims, excessive use of internet, all the rest of it. How's that being managed now? Because obviously, everybody's working from home, have you had to adapt your work, working sort of practices to take into account this? Because I'm sure it's terribly difficult now to actually keep an eye on people and how they're actually performing in terms of the issues that you raised in paragraph 42.
Yeah, it's, like I say, has been, it's been difficult, and it's, like I say, it's been able, we've had to adjust the way that we do things, so, yeah, it's been a learning curve, and like I say, at first, we did, we did struggle a little bit, and like I say, it's difficult at first doing interviews by teams, and like I say, people didn't always get internet connections, so you'd lose them when you was halfway through an interview, and then you'd have to restart again, so, yeah, it's picking up. But what we have now got the facilities, that we can actually go into Morefoot now, book a desk or book a meeting room, so, yeah, we're going to start utilising that more and, yeah, so getting back to it more as business as usual and, yeah, continuing the work that we do.
The numbers were low in 1920, but are you expecting these numbers to be a little bit higher this time round?
Sorry?
The numbers in terms of the investigations that you carried out in 1920, 2019 and 2020 were fairly low anyway, considering we've got such a large workforce, but with people working from home, et cetera, do you anticipate those numbers increasing?
They might. Like I say, it's a difficult one to gauge, isn't it? But, yeah, they might start increasing. I mean, the investigation side, like I say, things like the business grants that we've paid out and things like that, we did expect those to increase, and we'd have to investigate some of those, but to be fair, we had quite good controls in place to do the pre-payment checks, so we haven't had as many compared to other authorities' investigations on that side, but I know other authorities weren't as thorough doing the pre-payment checks, so at least we spent time getting that in place, so we haven't had the effects then of having to investigate fraudulent payments, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, very positive, yeah.
Sorry, councillor Hacek.
Thank you, Chair. Again, just staying with paragraph 42, I mean, obviously, we've had some work, a lot of the workforce will have been working in very difficult circumstances during the past 15 to 18 months, and whilst people have been office-based, excessive use of internet during working time, I think, just to flag that that does need to be more flexible, because people will have been working from home, working around children, competing for wifi, competing for equipment, and, again, I suppose the council ought to be grateful, because they'll have also, to a great extent, been using their own wifi in order to undertake council work, so I think not to lose sight of the fact that people will have been achieving a lot of the work under very difficult circumstances, and I just would hate it, appreciation of that to be lost in looking at it for the coming year.
Yeah, that is a fair point, and like I say, people have had some difficulties, and we have had, you know, there's people that are working at home, that are on their own in the homes, and they've got that isolation and, yeah, mental health issues, so it's, yeah, we have to be mindful of that, so, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I think we've had small children and dance classes interrupting us in our, in our deliberations over the last year. I just wanted to say thank you for this report, because, as you say, paragraph five in the summary is good, and six, and I have to keep remembering that adequate is actually good and not just sort of, well, that's all right then. I was really pleased to see that we have SIP for trainees, because it means that we are planning for the future and that we are still doing training, when I know lots of people are cutting back on those sorts of posts, so that bodes well for us for the future. I'm expecting we'll be getting fewer falsification of mileage claims with everybody working from home, walking from the kitchen isn't quite the same. So overall, I just wanted to say thank you very much for this report, and I think we all do feel very reassured by it. So, having said that, can I ask everybody to agree the recommendations? Simon, you're very quiet over there, it always worries me. Okay. That's agreed, and we move on to our next item, which is item eight, which is, Gillian, it's the annual governance statement.
Thank you, Chair. As Linda mentioned in her report, the council is required to produce an abs signed off as part of its annual accounts, the annual governance statement. The statement is intended to identify any significant control weaknesses and to set out how the council intends to address those. So this relates, it's a retrospective look, it relates to the financial year 202021, as do the annual accounts. So the report starts by setting out the basis of the council's governance framework, and then on page 67, it talks about... then on page sixty-seven, it talks about the review of effectiveness. So the council has a duty to conduct at least annually a review of the effectiveness of its governance framework, and the next couple of pages explain how the council does that. There are two things that I'd just like to bring to the attention of the committee that are slightly different this year. We have had the effect of Covid, so this, as I said, ran from April twenty to March twenty-one, so therefore was covered, the whole period was affected by Covid nineteen pandemic. And then the second thing just to note is the anticipated changes due to the governance referendum that took place in May twenty-one, which requires the council to change its governance, and that is a full review of its constitution and decision-making in May twenty-two. Therefore, as part of that, it will change our governance framework and we'll need to consider that as part of the project. The governance issues that have been highlighted, sorry, the review of effectiveness has highlighted some issues that largely are the same as the issues that I was reporting to you last year. The reason being because we had the pandemic year, that there wasn't much progress made during that twelve months on the issues that were outstanding at that time. However, each of the items that are listed from page seventy do now give you an update on what's happened this calendar year, if you will, where we're starting to make inroads into each of the areas of weakness of governance. So, Chair, I think there's nothing, there isn't a major control weakness here that we, that I want to bring to the attention of the committee. This is a list of items that we consider as an organisation we need to be aware of and do something about rather than them being a significant control weakness. So that, Chair, is the statement for this year.
Thank you, Gillian. Are there any questions on this report? No, I just wanted to ask something about on page seventy-two, the fraud awareness e-learning, which I think we had been discussing, haven't we, about its availability at previous meetings? So I'm pleased to see it's there. Do we know, can we find out, how many people have started using it? Because it clearly, it looks like a very useful tool for our staff.
Yeah, I need to answer that. Yeah, it went live and it's been rolled out, but like I say, we've advertised it, we've put it on the internet, asking staff to complete it, but it's not a mandatory training course at the moment. We are trying to go down that route and get it mandatory, but at the moment it's not. So we are relying on it sort of filtering down from directors. But we do get a report, we have got a report on the usage, and at the moment, it hasn't been, it hasn't been that many people done the e-learning at the moment. So, yeah, it's something we're looking at, and we are going to try and, obviously, we'll keep pushing it to be mandatory, but we are going to have to try and promote it, promote it more through each portfolio.
Thank you very much. There aren't any other questions, can we just accept the recommendations on page fifty-nine? Is that agreed? Very quiet. And our next item is agenda item nine, which is David Phillips about re-procuring our external audit provision, which has been something of an exciting topic for us of late.
Thank you, Chair, yes. For those of you that were on the committee some time ago, we have a five-year procurement contract with Jean for external audit that was procured nationally via Public Sector Audit Appointments, or PSAA. Like, around ninety-eight percent of local authorities in the last national procurement round, we opted for the national procurement process rather than opting to try and appoint our own auditors. Although we're only three years into that contract, the point has come already where PSAA are asking whether people want to opt into the new national procurement process or go on their own. This report discusses various options and recommends that we go with PSAA for re-procurement. It's worth saying, even since I drafted this report, there's been a couple of developments. One is that I've had more opportunity to consult with colleagues at other local authorities, and there is almost complete unanimity that they're going to go for PSAA. I spoke to colleagues at Greater Manchester, and they said nine out of the ten met there are wanting to go for PSAA. Nottingham, same message. Bristol, same message. Leeds, same message. So there's Liverpool, same message. So there's all the support for that. Locally, Doncaster want to go for PSAA. Barnsley were minded to do something different, but I got an email from them today saying, then I want to go for PSAA as well. So options of cooperating with other local authorities to procure ourselves are non-existent, I think it's fair to say. The other thing that came in literally this afternoon, and the Chair has seen the email, but it might be worth circulating to our members, is, thanks, Chair, and that will happen, is an email from the Chair of the LGA councillor, James Jameson, who talks about this. I think I could have saved myself writing the report, frankly, if I'd had that a week ago. He talks about the frustrations that we've all felt about the external audit process over the last few years. He reminds people that there are in fact quite a lot of audits outstanding from nineteen twenty, and I know at least two of the core cities still have their nineteen twenty audit open, so much as we were frustrated that our audit wasn't signed off until April. That looks like quite a good result compared to a number of other people. But he says very strongly that despite the flaws in the external audit market that I've talked about, the way forward is collective bargaining from all local authorities to push for better audit reprovision and a wider choice of people and more capacity in the market, frankly, which has had too limited capacity for the last ten years now and is getting worse rather than better. So he's strongly urging all local authorities to go for PSAA re-procurement. And even without that message last time, ninety-eight percent of local authorities did. So I think we're on fairly safe ground to suggest strongly that the committee does endorse us to go for PSAA.
Thank you, David. Any objections?
No. Just a comment, we should just push more people to train as auditors, shouldn't we? So, yeah, young people, if you want to earn a lot of money, train us up and audit.
Is that true, Linda? No, not in the internal audit, but, yeah, probably the external audit, there is a bit more, yeah. I could keep pushing it. Right. Audit, an exciting opportunity, there we go. Thank you, Angela. With that, can we all agree that report? Thank you very much. And item ten, which is our outline work programme, and there are suggestions for the next committee meeting in October for two additional reports. One was just to have another snapshot report of how the member, oh, thank you, Jason, of how the member development programme is going so far. I know, talking to colleagues, that it's felt quite onerous at times because there's been so much being thrown at us because of the changes in the governance of the council. We've been getting lots and lots of different sessions to attend and join in with, and it's been quite tough going at times, but I think it's been useful. But it would be good to hear from other people and have a report about how it's gone and what the feedback has been like. So that's a report we'd like. And then Angela, I think you wanted to ask for another report.
Yes, Chair, thank you. I have had lots of, in the last eighteen months, lots of dealings with people not being able to lodge complaints and constituents not being able to contact the council when they've had any kind of problems, and we discussed it as a group. And all of my colleagues have, in my group, experienced the same, and I think that that is replicated with every single councillor. So I would like to call for an earlier report from the, you know, the customer service side, especially with regards to the telephony and the website. You know, I remember when I first was elected and I came onto this committee, we discussed how we could get this spanking new, you know, telephony system that would be in place in the early months of twenty twenty, and actually, the experience of the public is very, very negative. And they get to the point where they despair and contact their councillors to sort things out for them. So I think it's very important that we get to the bottom of why people are still experiencing and why it's always twenty-eight minutes wait.
Jill, did you want to come in?
Thank you, yes. I've just noticed that we actually, on the October work programme, we've got the annual ombudsman report, and it's Colleen Bagraves-Paul, who's the service delivery manager within customer services. It might be that Colleen's able to also give you an update at that committee. I can ask her if that's okay?
Yeah, that would be okay, thank you.
And perhaps we could ask the cabinet member who has been also looking at customer care very strongly to come and give an update on the work that she has been doing. Okay, right. Well, can we agree those items for our work programme, please? Thank you. In which case, that's the end of our open agenda. So we're now going to go into closed session. I have to read the legal paragraph, which explains, the report at item six is not available to the public and press because it contains exempt information described in paragraph three of part one of schedule twelve A of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, as amended, regarding information relating to the financial or business affairs of any particular person, including the authority holding that information. So that is the reason why we're now going into closed session for item six. So thank you, everybody who has been watching. And Jason? Can we breathe yet, Jason? Okay. Right. And breathe, everybody. And agenda item six, and that's Helen. So, thank you, Helen.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, I do have a bit of a cough.